First of all, Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to this evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, January 9th, 2023 regular meeting to order. Matt, would you call roll?
Yep. John Krescher.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Cody Nicolai.
Here.
Joanna Reyes.
Here.
Lance Trollop.
Here.
Karen Vandenberg.
Here.
Lee Webster.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. Please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And it is at this time, no speakers. I will skip over one of the agenda items then. Agenda item number six, approve the consent agenda, appointments, separations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes, the regular session of December 12th, 2022, special session of December 19th, 2022, payment of bills, budget, status and investment report, and donations to the district from Central Wisconsin Contractor Association, G.I. Associates, Greenheck Foundation, Don and Joan Smith, Veterans of the Foreign Wars of the U.S., Jim Zelenka, Susan and Gary Zimprick, Barbara Kolfstad, Rib Mountain Lutheran Church, First English Lutheran Church, American Aunt Line Giving Foundation, an anonymous donor, Forest Park Neighborhood, GPM Southeast, and the Marathon County Medical Society. I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for the many donations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda number seven, old recurring business restructuring, and the board will continue to explore options related to restructuring, and I would imagine at this point in time, Dr. Hiltz, you will take it.
I will. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So if you if you looked at the attached presentation, you'll notice that we don't have scenarios tonight. We've been getting a lot of questions, both from the board and from staff and community about, you know, questions that people want to know about staffing and, you know, costs that are going to be saved and, you know, which which school there's a lot of detailed questions that people want answers to that frankly, the the plan, the final planning process is is where all those questions are answered. And so I wanted to take a step back, just remind everybody kind of where we're at, and then at the end of this, I will be asking the board for some direction to see if you are ready to consider a final proposal at the end of the month. We won't be taking any formal action tonight, but there's a lot of information here I hope is helpful to people, just kind of help set the stage. Cassie, could you go forward? As always, we start with our why, right? The whole reason we're talking about this is that we want to improve opportunities for students, improve service to families, and be a better employer. That's really what's driving all of this, and that's what's stated here. Also, if you can advance, yeah, you know, this, I've shared this with people, this is the the most comprehensive project or change that I've had the opportunity to to work on. And so we've been doing a lot of, you know, conversations, a lot of research. I think I've shared that I'm I'm working with a local, with a chief strategy officer from a national organization, someone who does this every day, just to make sure the process we're using, the information we're using to make decisions, the the guidance that we give the board is 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 consistent with best practice. And 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 so one of the the books I went back and read was Jim Collins' book, Good to Great. I know it's old, but some of that wisdom, much of that wisdom is is still relevant today. And he talks in there about why some companies make the leap to greatness and others don't. And he asks the question, why aren't all school systems excellent? Why aren't all governmental systems excellent, companies? Why aren't they all excellent? His premise is that because they're all really good, and when you're really good, you don't feel that need to take the next step to be excellent. The Wausau School District is really good, and we have pockets of greatness and pockets of excellence. We want everybody to have that same level of excellence, experience that same level of greatness. So I just, I wanted to just offer that up as as consideration about why we're, why we want to move forward. Can you go for one more, Cassie? So to to help us look ahead a little bit, I'm really grateful that we have some current Wausau teachers who've been with us in the district for a while and want to share some thoughts that they have about about restructure. I'd like to start with Mr. Mossens, if I could, because I know you have a a six o'clock appointment back at West. Would you mind joining us? And Mr. McCormick, I think, is with you. Thank you both very much. If you wouldn't mind hitting the button on the mic so everybody can hear you.
Okay, are we on?
You are on.
Thank you, Dr. Hiltz. And thank you, Board, for for having us, for entertaining us. My name is John Mossens. Do I have to say my address? 803 Steuben Street? Okay. This beautiful man here is Tom McCormick, my sidekick for tonight. I will let him introduce himself a little bit further in a minute here. I am here to share, we are here to share our thoughts regarding the restructuring plan from a secondary perspective. We have observed the open mic sessions via Zoom and have heard a lot of negative and challenging chatter, and we think it's time, I think it's time for the board to hear some positive reasons why we might want to consider restructuring as it has been discussed, and we're going to talk about it from a secondary perspective. Let me give you my background and why I think I might have some perspective to help some of this out. I'm a 33-year veteran of teaching English, 25 in the Wausau School District at Wausau West. 19 of those years, the last 19, as English Department Leader. I have coached track and field for 35 years, head coach for 29 of those. I'm a proud Wausau Education Association member, having served as president for seven of those years. And most importantly, my wife and I have raised three graduates of the Wausau School District, two boys from Wausau East and a girl, Grace, Princess Grace, from Wausau West. In addition, my wife Trish serves as PST for Secondary Transition in the Special Ed Department for the Wausau School District, having initiated the 18- to 21-year-old STEP program currently taught at the UWSP campus. I believe these experiences have afforded me a certain range of perspectives to talk about what I believe the benefits of restructuring might bring about, and I'll let Tom introduce himself a little bit.
I didn't write mine. Oh, so you're going to get a quick, we both got hired within a week of each other back in 1998. So I, and I had 11 years in Athens, Wisconsin, before I came to Wausau. I have two children that are both Wausau East grads, and so I'm very familiar with what is happening in terms of lack of opportunities for our kids at Wausau East in particular, relatively speaking. My wife works in the community, always has, so she, we, I'm an educator, she is not, so she brings a different perspective to our meals at night. I just, I just want, since we're just introducing ourselves, I've coached many years as a head coach, as well as an assistant coach, and continue to do so. I think it's important to let you know, we we've come to this office, and we've argued often with Dr. Hiltz and Mr. Tess and Mrs. Gunner. And so we feel very comfortable being here to share our views.
Just because we argue doesn't mean we don't like them. And we also recognize, Tom and I recognize, that this this opportunity does not come without risk. If I learned something from Mac over the years, it's that you have to stick out your chin once in a while, and you have to be willing to take a shot, and this is one of those opportunities. And so I'm very comfortable, we're very comfortable speaking to you about this stuff, and we can talk to you about this afterwards if if need be as well. So first and foremost, let us be clear that nothing that we speak about tonight should be misconstrued as disparaging towards any of our teachers, any of our coaches, our advisors, our administrators, or any other WSD personnel in any way, shape, or form. Our family, his family, myself personally, believe that the greatest resource of the Wausau School District is the people that work with our students. Please, everybody understand that. So where can I start? First of all, we've all heard it a thousand times. Our educators are stressed out, overwhelmed, overworked. Tabitha hears it, Tabitha and I still talk about it, even though I'm not present anymore. If if we restructure at the secondary level, can we ease the burden of our professionals? I'll take my department, English, my specialty, I'll chop wood in my own forest, so to speak. Okay? Let me use some numbers. At Wausau West, we have 12 FTE, or in the course of year, 24 semesters. Of those semesters, six of us teach three preps or more. So for example, I teach advanced composition, British literature, and introduction to creative writing. Six total semesters, that's 25%. I talked to my partner at Wausau East, Jamie Wooler. 71% of their teachers teach three preps or more. 25%, 71%. West to east. Now, what's the big deal? Well, let me explain. Wausau East offers a very excellent English program. My son's graduated from Wausau East. I talked to them about what they were learning, it's awesome. Okay? What I am suggesting is, if east and west were combined, let's say, would we be able to streamline our programs? Would we be able to streamline our scope and sequence? Pick the best of both worlds from our reluctant readers, our reluctant writers, speakers, and listeners, all the way up to our AB and IP kids? And would we be able to put together an amazing ELA curriculum, eight, nine, 10 through 12, actually, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and make it one of the best ELA curriculums in the state of Wisconsin, scope and sequence wise, top to bottom? I believe we could. Okay? Pick the best of both worlds. Get rid of the redundancy, get rid of the repetition. On top of this, would this, and again, these are, these are questions to be asked, would this lighten the load for teachers? In terms of the teaching the three preps and the number of students that an English teacher sees, and I'll just use English because I don't worry about math and social studies and science, but would that lighten the load for our English teachers? I have a position statement here from the National Council of Teachers of English. They suggest highly no more than 100 students per year for an English teacher, or in our case, because we're semesterized, a semester. I've never seen less than 115 to 120 students in a normal semester class load. That's just the way it is at Wausau West and Wausau East. If we combined, because we would have the resources to bring people together and possibly ease that load, could we reduce that number of students per assignment? I don't know. I believe with some research and some careful use of our our human resources, that there's a possibility of that happening, which would result in more success for our students and for our staff. Less stress, less, less taking papers home, as I've done for the last two weeks, and grading, and better education in terms of ELA for our students, better reading, better writing, better speaking, and better listening for our students. The best teaching of English is to get papers back as quickly as possible. The more students you have, the longer that takes. I can speak from experience, I've been doing it for 33 years. Okay? All right. I believe we have the brains between administration at this level, administration at the building level, and us, English Department Leaders, and our people to make that happen. Next, and I think we'll take questions at the end. Next, let's talk about sports, clubs, co-curriculars, pretty important in this community. There have been arguments made passionately that we will lose time-honored traditions. I respect those arguments. The log game's a big deal. We haven't had the log game for three years, and we've done just fine. Traditions, rivalries can be created and do already exist with other schools. I've, I'm still, I still coach girls' track, I've been coaching girls' track forever, and I'm very tied in with football programs on both sides of the river. Tom and I did all the Wausau East games this year. I did the PA for Wausau East, and I do the PA for Wausau West, and I know that those coaches have talked and and can find rivalries out there, and are looking forward to those sorts of things. Okay? But what could a combined Wausau program be in terms of togetherness? We hear from both sides of the river that athletic programs are underfunded. It's a fact. Both athletic programs' budgets combined are the lowest in the valley, combined are the lowest in the valley. Now, why not? Why not combine resources? Combine coaches, combine athletes, combine facilities, and combine funding to create viable, sustainable, competitive programs for our students and for our community? Why not get the entire city of Wausau behind one school competitively and financially for once? Not only sports, what about arts? Arts flourish on both sides of the river. We just had a band from Wausau East go out to the Rose, Tournament of Roses. What kind of amazing productions and showcases would be created with combined programs? We can imagine. The club and activities advisorship is active and alive. Many of our teachers at both schools look forward to their co-curricular duties. This would not change, it would only be enhanced. I'm of the mindset that competition leads to success. I've seen it. Okay? I've coached. I can never have enough sprinters on my girls' track team. The more girls' sprinters we have, the better my team is. Okay? Or distance girls, or throwers, or whatever. Okay? If Mac's a defensive guy, and he's got a bunch of good linebackers, I know him as a football coach, he's going to have, he's going to have a good defense. I've seen it in my professional experience, and I've seen it in teams I've coached. Advisors, coaches, athletes rise to the competition level when challenged in a positive, respectful Here's something else, going in a different direction that Tom and I've talked about. Tom and I paint together when we're not fishing in the summer, and the human resource of educator is drying up in this state, but it's been drying up since 2010. Act 10 happened in 2010. And as Department Leader of English, Mr. Sekbauer is, you know, has me in on interviews, and of course, he makes final decision, but, you know, we work together in terms of interviewing the candidates. Wausau West used to get 25 to 50 English candidates for a position. We now get six. And I'm sorry, but we're Wausau West, we're Wausau East. Same thing for them, I talked to Jamie.
Can I jump in there? We had, a year ago, in 21, 22, we had two math openings at Wausau East for, I don't, I moved out of math, but we needed two math teachers. We hired two math teachers. One was not math certified. She has a business head degree. And and the other person was there for one year and is no longer employed by the district by choice. But they were the only two candidates for two openings, and the job pool is not going to get bigger in the next, I don't know, three to five years, I guess. So just wanted to jump in there.
No, no. Thank you for that. Anecdotally, that's a great example. You know, we've got 29 retirees this year, and our generation of teachers, as we as we know them, is, it's a big pool right now of people in the next three to five years that's going to be retiring, that we see, and talk to, of course. So finding viable candidates is going to be more and more difficult. So with the restructuring, do we have to be as concerned by doing some combining? And you know what I'm talking about with that. Okay? So can we alleviate some of that pressure of of finding new bodies when we already have the bodies, I guess, is the positive spin on it. Okay? What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to put a positive spin on all of this. Lastly, yeah, go ahead.
That's the Good to Great comment that Dr. Hiltz put on right there. You know, we don't want just somebody in front of our kids, we want somebody that's dang good, tired of teaching our kids.
Right. Thank you. So I'll finish up here. Something that we have witnessed, and we talk about this a lot, is teaching and coaching the Wausau School District, this is what we hear. How come West gets this and East doesn't? How come Wausau East gets and West doesn't? And there's always this on the side of the river, right?
Little tug of war.
Little tug of war, and it's, it's that way, I'm sure, in every school district that has two high schools, or three, or four. It's been, it's, is it, is it, is it time to get past that, is the question. Okay? Can we, do we, can we get past the, their track program and funding, and my track program, our track program and funding, and staffing, and administration, and students, and the tug of war that goes on with all of that? Okay? How about if we flip that narrative and we become a positive force for our Wausau community at large? Everyone supports everyone. The Chamber of Commerce folks don't have to worry about, well, if we give money to this side of the river for this, what are we going to do for, or not just, but I mean individual chamber members? Okay? You, the Board of Education, the policymakers, you don't have to worry about keeping the eggs in the basket even. And finally, once and for all, we can all cheer for a Wausau high. Thank you for your time and patience. We can answer questions now, I guess, if you have them, or later, you know how to contact me, we're, and Tom, we're both in the email. And we know that we might take some heat for this, but we're okay. Any questions that you have?
Sure. Go ahead.
Just one clarifying, I don't know if you're going to touch on it later, Dr. Hiltz or not, but one of the things that has been talked about a lot is that consolidation of teaching staff will take the pressure off trying to have to fill X number of roles going forward. I don't believe I've seen anything that says we're going to require fewer teachers.
We won't require it. It'll be, it could be an opportunity. One of the things that the board has not seen, or anybody hasn't seen yet, is Mr. Tess and I are putting together a pro forma that that will kind of outline savings from staff, right? And again, the the balance, and this is where people, this is where I struggle, this is where everybody struggles. We're not in this to, and this will sound horrible, but we're not in this to save money, we're in this to make better opportunities for students and improve our standing as an employer. So if we can, we've talked about right sizing the district, right? So currently, we have positions that we can't fill. There is work to be done for those positions, and right now, we have to spread that work again across other staff. If we can reduce that workload, then we will be right sized. So there are opportunities to reduce staff, but again, we've, what's going to drive a lot of this is, once the board commits to a direction, one of the first and largest tasks that has to be undertaken is to recreate a 5-12 scope and sequence merged. That is going to drive our staffing, that'll drive facilities, that really drives everything. And so the questions about, could we reduce staff? Yes, but we need to do that work before we can answer those questions. That's the hard part here, is we, it's going to take, and you're going to see a little bit later, I've got a, an estimated cost, there's going to be thousands of hours put into that. So we want a commitment before we involve that much. I know it's not a direct answer, but that's, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could, if I could jump on that. So a lot of, a lot of the anxiety right now from from fellow staff members is, well, where would, where would I teach? Where would, where would this, our team, oh my gosh. I said, look, exactly that, without Dr. Hiltz not even talking, is there, there's so much that has to go into the planning before we would determine what teams are based on scope and sequence, and what the curriculum looks like, to know who's teaching where and what, yet. That's, that's down the road.
Yeah. And I guess maybe to say it differently, though, Tom, to your example, you needed two math teachers last year. Fast forward five years, we're in this 10 years, whatever consolidated world, you still need two math teachers, you still got to go out and look for two math teachers.
Right.
This activity does not guarantee that we're going to get more applicants per position or...
You're, you're going to get less. The kids aren't in college.
Right. There aren't, there aren't teachers coming, coming out.
I just wanted to clarify, because I think that there was a misunderstanding out there. Somehow, people were thinking that by doing this, we're suddenly going to need fewer teachers, and it's going to be much easier to fill roles. And that's not true.
I think the biggest takeaway for us is, is what John said initially about the number of educators that have three more preps, you know, between each building.
Sure.
And just, we have one business head teacher at Wausau East, Wausau has five.
So then...
He's teaching, at East, he's teaching probably in our eight-hour days, I think he's teaching all six, he's probably teaching five or six preps during the school store.
Yeah.
Where that's a shared community at Wausau West, because there's five people to share that, if you will. You know, so there's probably an expert county teacher, an expert marketing teacher, and so on and so forth.
Well, I just want to say first, thank you so much for coming. I really appreciated hearing the perspective, no, really, from, from staff, because it's all over the place, and so I just appreciate, it was really great to hear. I wanted to speak to that same point. I get the sense that that is really an improvement potentially of working conditions, then, in that you might be able to, with removing some of those redundancies, people then are kind of like, this is my lane, and I have fewer preps.
Yes.
And for each, within those same number of staff individuals, it just decreases those preps per person.
Yes.
Okay? Which seems to me would be welcomed by staff, and perhaps then make it a more inviting workplace environment.
Yes.
And attractive to outside candidates, potentially.
It was attractive to me 25 years ago, when I came from the school district I came from, because of that reason, and it would continue to be even more attractive.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
You know, let me just follow up on that as well, and I agree, and I appreciate the two of you being here to make these points specifically, instead of just coming and us talking about what's going on. The destination of Wausau, I'm that much older than you guys are, when I left, when they came in, we had that here, where we had our, we had our IB English teacher, and that's all they dealt with. And we had the freshman English teacher, that's all they dealt with. Our preps, like you were talking about, John, were a lot less than what you're talking about, what you're dealing with in the math department, Tom. I cannot imagine teaching five different preps that many schools will do because of the lack of teachers we have. So I think we need to be aware of the fact that consolidation will be a real positive, based on what I'm hearing from you. You're in the midst of it, and I think we need to really be open to those comments from our teachers. Other questions, since we have them here?
And we do have some elementary teachers who want to address the board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the evening yet.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, that's a hard show to follow. Those high school teachers, you know, they come right at you. Elementary's a little more wishy-washy, so...
No, that's not true.
All right. So first of all, my name is Kim Pearson, and thank you very much for having us here tonight as well.
And I'm Kelly Brandt. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Satine Elementary. This is my 18th year. Kim has written up something very nicely for you guys, and I'm here to support and share many of the thoughts that that she has here, so.
All right. I am in my 29th year in the Wausau School District. I've been an elementary teacher in Wausau for 28 years, and currently serve as one of the math specialists in the Wausau School District. However, I have been around a lot longer than that, because I was also a student at Riverview, John Meyer, and Wausau West. So to begin, I just want to clarify that I'm here tonight to give my opinion on what I see as the positives of restructuring. I see as the positives of restructuring for our school district. I'm here to inform you as, onto what I see based on my experience in the district. Elementary teachers work very hard and are often feeling extremely stressed. They are wearing many hats these days due to the current needs of our learners academically, behaviorally, and emotionally. As you know, there are currently inequities across the district with supports and class sizes. You have already acknowledged that restructuring the elementary schools would help to provide more equity across the district in these areas. I would like to dig a little deeper and share how this could directly affect our teachers and learners. First, restructuring our elementary schools would put more teachers in fewer places. In thinking about our ultimate goal as teachers, doing what's best for our learners, more teachers in one place does not always mean better results. More teachers in one place means opportunities for instructional teacher leaders to lead, collaborate, and share with colleagues, which will have a direct impact on our learners. Teachers have had a variety of experiences and trainings. We need to provide more opportunities for them to be able to share and collaborate best practices based on their knowledge and experiences. Restructuring will put more teachers together, so there will be equity within these messages and opportunities. It is also important for more teachers to have discussions with colleagues about looking at current practices and analyzing what is and what is not working. When more teachers are able to talk, collaborate, analyze, and model for each other, good things happen for our learners. Next, we have heard that there may be seven to nine possible positions that will need to serve in a different capacity at elementary because there will be fewer classrooms. This is a perfect opportunity to put teachers who model best instructional practices in positions to have a large impact on our early learners. Now, we don't know what that will look like, but we do know there's a multitude of research that talks about the benefits of establishing a strong foundation with our early learners. The more teachers we have leading, collaborating, and implementing best instructional practices with our early learners, the bigger the impact will be. Our K-2 classrooms need this. In thinking about math, I came across this quote from the book Catalyzing Change in Early Childhood and Elementary Classrooms by NCTM. It states, "The importance of starting children strong in mathematics cannot be overstated. A set of landmark studies identified children's early mathematical knowledge about age five as a predictor of later success in mathematics. Furthermore, children's growth in mathematical knowledge in kindergarten and first grade are an even stronger predictor of later mathematics, even into high school, more than school entry knowledge." For reading, a long-term study by the Annie E. Casey Foundation found that students who were not proficient in reading by the end of third grade were four times more likely to drop out of high school than proficient readers. In fact, 88% of students who failed to earn a high school diploma were struggling readers in third grade. For these reasons, it shows the need to do whatever possible to get all hands on deck during those early learning years to solidify the foundational skills. Finally, on a lighter note, though still very important, in my current position, part of my job is to coach and mentor teachers, provide AVMR support, and provide professional learning in the area of math. It is very hard to reach teachers in 13 elementary schools. With restructuring, I would be able to reach teachers in a more efficient manner and therefore provide more equity within these professional learning opportunities. Based on my experience, these are some of the potential benefits that I envision occurring within the elementary schools if restructuring takes place. It comes down to the teacher, the teachers planning and facilitating the instruction, and teachers working together to believe success is possible for all learners. No matter what decision occurs, I do know Wausa teachers will continue to work hard and do what's best for their learners. Thank you.
Would you like to add?
No.
Just in support?
I was here as, well, support. No, but we, we worked, you know, read it through together and, yeah, share the same thoughts, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Well, questions from the board?
I'm just going to say again, like, I'm not kidding, it's really valuable to hear from staff and from both perspectives, secondary and elementary level. I completely agree with you that the foundation is critical for the success of these students, and it, I really appreciate hearing about the increased collaboration and sharing of best practices and the mentoring that can happen so much greater when there's more teachers in fewer places, so I appreciate your perspectives. Thanks. Thank you.
Just one clarification, the nine, I think it was seven to nine FTEs, Kim, you said, might become available. That assumes the consolidation of five elementary schools, correct?
Correct, yes. And it does not include what might happen with, with middle school, right? Again, if we shift fifth grade into middle school, eighth grade into a junior high, that five through seven, that will be restructured as well. Again, that, that's second, that's why I say that secondary redevelopment is really driving a lot of the, the data that we are currently lacking because we haven't done all that, that restructuring yet. But yes, that's assuming five.
And that, that brings us to that issue that we talked about before, that at some point, decisions would have to be made as to whether or not that staff savings would be used to lower class sizes or provide additional supports, you know, for someone such as your position, rather than lowering, lowering the class size. Class size would be lower per teacher, in a sense, but not per room.
Yes.
Or combination of both.
Yeah. Yeah, the change gives us the opportunity to make that decision. Currently, we don't even have that option.
Right. And that's why I kind of stated that, that we don't know what that will look like yet. It's definitely something that will be positive for kids in any manner that we have.
And speaking to, like, having more teachers at, at different schools in the form of a mentor. So I think, you know, these new teachers that come in are just kind of thrown to it. And there's so many things that are going on, and the logistics of everything and learning, it's very difficult. And right now, we are dealing with retention and keeping teachers. And so having the mentors there and the more of the support from kind of veteran teachers would be very nice for the district to retain those teachers, I think, as well.
Thank you for coming. Has there been any negative feedback or anything that teachers have brought to you about the restructure? Because everything that we hear is positive, and I agree with you that it would be a great change for us, but has there been any negative feedback from teachers and staff regarding the restructure?
I would, I mean, at this point, I think there's a lot of feelings that are shared. It's a highly emotional topic at this point. My goal tonight was really just to kind of bring the positives of what I see in my opinion. So, you know, I think there's a lot of different opinions out there that everyone is dealing with at this point.
Yeah.
And that is why I ask, because we do receive some negative and positive, and I wanted to know if there was anything that you thought of that would negatively impact us if we moved forward with the restructure?
Ms. Marson, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a great question. And yes, some of the negatives are more emotionally driven, to be honest. And, and, and I respect those, as we all do, because right now, it's, it's, we don't know what we don't know. So that's where people are at with their concerns. And, you know, things like, well, but I have such a great team at Wausa West, I don't want to lose this group of individuals that I'm teaching with. And that's true, I, I, you know, however, we don't, we don't teach because of the people that we teach with. We teach because of the students that we are working with, is my philosophy. And that might not sound what other, like what other people think, but I'm there for the students, I'm not there for the adults. I know that sounds callous, but I don't really care. We are there for, we are there for our students. And if they're really my friends, they'll still be my friends even if we aren't together as a team anymore. From my old school that I was at 25 years ago, I still have friends because they're really my friends. Let's be honest. Okay? Some other things like, well, I could never teach at that building if it's blank, blank grades. Well, how do you know? How do you know? Right? Those are some things. I don't know about what you've heard.
I just think the fear of the unknown is the biggest one.
Yes, that's, yes, I thought I was...
The what ifs.
It's the unknown. Yeah.
And, and fear of the unknown is natural for humans. And you're going to have negativity because of that.
Right. And I ask that because everything we've heard, it has been positive. And I don't want our audience to think that we just brought you guys on because all we wanted to hear was a positive.
Sure.
Because I know there's, there's feedback on both sides. My mother-in-law's a retired kindergarten teacher of 35-plus years, and she's helped me as a parent so much with my five-year-old son. And to know that people like her could be in those roles to help teachers that are coming on as new teachers, give them that support, I think that would be very important, and it would help retain our teachers, but also help them grow and be better teachers. So I think, I didn't even think of something like that, so that, that's exciting to hear, that that could be a possibility.
For sure.
Mr. Webster?
I really appreciate you coming and doing this, both of you. The concern that I have, or question that I have, is you've mentioned academic, behavioral, and emotional. And the collaboration is pretty clear about what would happen academically. Do you see some advantages in terms of dealing with behavioral and emotional issues also?
I think that, I just, I feel that the, the more quality teachers that you have that are there to help, you have your teacher who's teaching the academics, and you're trying to get a lesson across, yet you're having this behavior over here. You, you know, if you have that extra staff that is, you know, educated and in that realm and, and able to help out, it helps out for the entire class.
And one aspect, thank you for sharing all that. And one aspect we haven't talked, we've talked a lot about teachers, but we have some really awesome support staff too, who will also, you know, be available to help. You know, if we know there are additional needs in a classroom, we can have a support staff person in there as well, you know, to help support some of the behaviors, right? So it's, there's a lot of opportunities.
Any final questions?
Just a comment. As a parent of a kindergartner, I can speak to having that para and how important that is because at that age, they're learning how to regulate their emotions and how to maybe calm down from a situation. And sometimes that child does have to be removed from the class. And if that child is removed, at least the teacher doesn't have to stop what they're doing in the teaching for the rest of the class and be able to take that student out and, you know, help him regulate his emotions. My son is that way. He is a great scholar. He's reading and is great at math, but his emotions is where we're working on him with. And I'm constantly talking to this teacher and this para because I'm very involved in what's going on, and I'm always on the teacher's team. So I'm always talking to them, and I, I can see how that support helps the teacher out and also the class, where the teacher doesn't have to take that time out and step out of the classroom with that student.
Again, thank you very much for being here. It's a tremendous opportunity for us to hear the teachers and to hear what you're talking about when it comes to the students, the family, the choices, the opportunities that our students will have in all three As, academics, arts, and athletics. And I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you got to run, too. Have a good night at eighth grade parent night. So that was great. Thank you. So I really can't follow that. I mean, that, these are the kinds of comments, the conversations that I have with staff. And so I was really glad that, you know, some of our really respected teachers were willing to come and share with you. I'm, I know you found that valuable, so.
And it's, it's great to hear from our staff, where it's not just us saying it, and our, our audience thinks maybe we're just trying to speak of the positive, but it's great to hear the people that are actually in the schools speak to that.
Absolutely. And we can certainly speak to the risks as well. We know they're there, right? So if you give me about 10 minutes, just want to get some, some, some background, and like I said, to be, at the beginning, ask the board for some direction. So again, these are really the, the questions that run through my mind as I think about this. Do we want to continue as we are? Do we want to move from good to great? If so, we have to do some innovation. Innovation requires investment. Investment of time, investment of people, investment of resources. And where do we get that if we aren't on the, on this path? And it struck me the other day that our current weakness is the fact that we are spread out so thin. And we can turn that into our greatest strength. If we, if we didn't have that, that inefficiency, we wouldn't have the opportunity to bring everybody together to really serve children. So we can take that and turn it into our, really, one of our greatest strengths. So I, I, I'm, the more conversations I have about this, the stronger I believe that this is the, the path forward, so. Cassie, next one? So tonight, I want to take about 10 minutes and just review, there's a little bit of new information here, some of it is, is familiar to you, but I think it's important, like I said, that we step back just for a moment. Ahead, Cassie? So one thing that I've heard again is that, how can you move forward if you don't have answers to all these questions? And I want people to realize that this is the natural life cycle of a really complex project. We start with a problem. Somebody develops a possible solution. They talk to other people to kind of check their thinking. Do you think this has merit, doesn't it? And at some point, pretty early on, you bring it to, to the people who have the authority to make the decision. Last spring, we brought this to the board and said, we think this restructuring might help us. Do you see merit? Do you want us to move forward? You said, yes, we created our subcommittees. That's step three. That subcommittee also did a lot of work over the summer. Many of you are on those. The next step in that, if we, if we continue to find some merit, is we develop a proposal. We've been out talking to staff, we've been out talking to the community, we've been taking all these questions, and we're, we're feeding that into a proposal that you, you've seen many parts of it, but not all of it. The next step in this natural life cycle is for the decision makers to make a commitment to this path. And then we're able to answer all those questions. And there's going to be unknowns. There's going to be unforeseen things that come up, there's going to be challenges. But we've all been in these situations, and when we work together, we can find solutions to these things that are, that we know are going to come up. So the details that people are looking for come, once we say, yes, this is the direction we want to go, let's develop the plan. Can you go ahead, Cassie? And that leads me to this. Again, I think the school board members feel a lot of pressure to be able to answer very detailed questions. And I want to remind you and the audience that that's not your responsibility. You were elected to set the direction for the district. And once you do that, you've hired me to figure out how to get us there, right? You want to improve outcomes for students. You want to add more opportunities for students. You want to be a better employer. If that's where you want to go, then I can help develop the plan to get us there. To do that, to set the direction, you have to just know where you want us to go, you have to know the costs, you have to know the risks. Then, once we create these outcomes, this plan, your job, as always, is to monitor success. How are we doing? Are we do, are we accomplishing what we wanted to accomplish? And if not, where do we have to change direction? So the board is not expected to develop the plan. That's what you've hired me and many others to do. So I, I think it's important for people to realize that. You don't have to have every answer. When you want it, we'll certainly get it to you, right? You certainly have access. But this is a very complex problem, requires a lot of time. This is not your full-time job. So I just wanted to clarify that for people watching and maybe give a little grace to, to, so people understand. Can you go ahead, Cassie? So real quickly, this is the scenario A that we've been talking about. It's the, it's the one we're starting to feel most strongly about, that elementary... It's the, it's the one we're starting to feel most strongly about, that elementary level, most likely a K-four in this case, a middle school, um, where we really wanna focus on skill development, but really exploring opportunities for kids. A junior high, where they create their plan for their lives, get some inspiration, and then they enact that plan in senior high. Next, Cassie? You've seen this before. We currently have thirteen elementaries. You've heard from some of the people about the difficulty in serving thirteen elementaries. That statement is true for many of our staff. Um, all of our support teachers, our GT teachers, our EL teachers, a lot of our special ed teachers, um, district-level staff, you know, again, to get to thirteen is difficult. So, close five, repurpose three, perhaps sell two. Um, again, the main purpose for doing this is to, is to consolidate our resources so we can innovate, so we can better support teachers and students and families. Next, Cassie? The secondary, we would propose to move fifth grade into the middle schools, eighth grade into a junior high, become one high school. And you've heard many of the benefits of, of doing that. Next. So, desired future state. We have more detail behind this, and you've seen these before, so this is not new. Uh, and so I'm not gonna go through all of them, but to give students equal access to more and higher-quality programming, to save resources to reinvest, to offer the opportunity for expanded childcare for our staff and the community, to expand the number of athletic and arts opportunities, reduce the burden for the community for future improvements to schools. You talked about right sizing a little bit. Next one, Cassie? You heard about the value of additional resource teachers. Uh, I mentioned support staff as well. We have some wonderful support staff, they can do excellent work, and we'd like to make sure their efforts are, are fruitful. Traveling staff, satisfaction for everybody who's, uh, who's involved. The number of secondary school course offerings, you heard Mr. Masson and Mr. McCormick talk about, what kind of a curri, you know, a scope and sequence could we create five-twelve? It's really, the more I talk about this, the more excited I get, so. So that, is that our future that, that we want? Next, Cassie? It won't be free. Um, we're doing some preliminary estimates, and we'll finalize these. But to move this forward, first of all, every employee's gonna be involved in this in some level. They're gonna spend some time thinking about their own work or the work of their team, and so I just said, at least, you know, a half a day over the next year or so. Doesn't cost us anything, but it's time they're gonna put in. Significant investment into revising the secondary curriculum. I, I, we just guesstimated, as best we could, a hundred staff at two, two weeks apiece. We pay them for that, 'cause that's valuable time, so that's $200,000. If we'll have to, if we create these, this new five-twelve, we're gonna have to purchase some materials. That might be low. Um, but over time, we, we have to invest in some new materials. If we have a new name and a mascot, we need equipment, we need uniforms, there's another half a million. Legal costs, communication costs, signage, those things we're all trying to account for. That's 1.3 million dollars. That's why we don't wanna go down this road until we hear the board say, yeah, this is the future we want. And once we start that planning, if we run into barriers, we'll solve them. If we run into something that's not solvable, then we'll come back and reconsider. But the commitment we would ask you for soon would be, move forward unless there's some real reason that we absolutely cannot. Next, Cassie? And we can come back to this. Um, to the point that, that you asked earlier, what are the, what are the negatives? You know, we talk about them as risks, and we've talked about this. Some families may leave. We know that also, that's already happening. So if we don't change anything, we, we would project that we would continue to lose families. Staff may lose, may, may leave. You heard some comments here, there's, there's trepidation, um, you know, that, that could happen as well. We've talked about bus transportation, we had another meeting today around transportation with the city, um, just, again, trying to bring all of our partners together to answer questions as best as we can. In this current model, we would add an additional school transition, that junior high. We know as we make best use of our resources, enrollments might be tight for a while, and we also heard the reference about some traditions that would have to be recreated or turned into something else, or, or new ones created. Next one, Cassie? Similar risks if we do nothing. We're already losing families, we need a systemic change to reverse that trend. Declining enrollment, we've talked about that as a reality. That affects staffing, that affects programming, that affects our funding. I was thinking about this, you know, we, we really want to innovate. The last ten years, public schools have just been slowly, almost imperceptibly eroding. Cut a teacher here, cut a program there, cut a support here, a department budget here, it's just very, very slow, like I said, almost imperceptible, unless you look at it in the entire scope. We wanna reverse that, and we have the opportunity. So you've seen these before. I think there's one more slide? Yeah. So, back to your role. Your role is, what's the future state you want? What are the risks? What are the costs? And so I would ask, is the board ready to review a proposal on January twenty-third? A comprehensive proposal? So let me stop there and, and see what people are thinking.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, just, I, I guess maybe a couple of comments and a question too. If you could go back to the board roles and responsibilities, one. And I'm just gonna disagree with a few of those points, that the board doesn't need to be able to answer detailed questions or be able to speak to it, because quite frankly, if I'm going to get behind a direction or a strategy, I damn well better be able to speak to the nuts and bolts of that, so I can sell that, um, honestly, rather than have to come back and say, oh, well, what about this and what about that? It should be, and this, I guess, is kinda my, my macro point, something this big that will impact every student and every family in the district. The advantages of doing this should be so crystal clear that it's impossible to say that's the wrong thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how we can get, I, I don't know how the board can support that unless we know more of those details as time goes on. And I'm not talking the intricacies of what you're gonna do with HVAC at Rid Mountain or whatever, but being able to know, um, at more of a working level what the plan is and everything else, I think that that is imperative.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of us have been in this community for fifty-two years. We know a lot of people.
I am.
Forty-something. Um, it, it just, it, it's of an understanding, right? I mean, we're not a policymaking body that can go hide behind, you know, something in another city or another Washington. The expectation is that we're gonna know what's going on.
Absolutely. And, and, and it was not my intent to say you shouldn't, but, um, in, in, in a board's best practice, you won't know nuts and bolts on everything, right? But you will know, and, and again, uh, if you could advance, Cassie, to those outcomes, when you say, the outcome has to be crystal clear, this is what we're offering, right? This is what we can produce. And if that's what you want, I just need you to tell me, and we will certainly inform the board and the staff and the community as we progress in this planning, you will, it'll be very transparent. It, it, this is similar to a, a referendum, right? We come to the community with a, a vision, right? Boxes on a map that say, this is what we wanna do, this is what it's going to cost. And then, once we get a commitment from the community, then we invest all the time. And you can see, we're coming back to the board regularly to say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, and, and here's where we're over, and here's where we're under. It'll be a similar process. In this case though, it's our staff mainly who have to do the work, not engineers and architects, because they are content experts, right? And so, um, you, you will know what you need to know, absolutely.
And just, you know, two other points. I know we talked about the enrollment out of the district, and I brought this up before.
Yeah.
Based on the data provided, right? I mean, this possible restructuring would hit three of those eleven.
Oh, the, the, yeah.
Why, why parents have told you that they're leaving the district?
Yeah.
This would hit three of them. So to me, I, I, that needs to be blown out a little bit more to understand what are those real drivers, and how will this for sure positively impact that?
Yeah.
And the other piece is, when it comes to the risks, we talked, there was one bullet point in there, and I, I know that this has not become vetted completely. Number three, bus transportation times may increase. So we can say for certainty, they will increase, just due to proximity of students to Wausau West and students to Wausau East. It, it's logistically impossible for it not to increase.
Unless there are direct routes.
Well...
That's my only thing.
Sure.
You're probably right, but unless there's direct routes, and that's where, you know, again...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, and, and if you look, so the distance from west to east is 3.9 miles, okay? It's about eleven minutes one way. If you took the enrollment today, as it sits, in eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and if we had to bus kids over to east, and then we had to bus kids from the east side over to west, per student, and I get that there's, there's, uh, carpooling and busing and all that stuff, right? It equates to 1.9 million miles of, of additional travel time, or additional travel distance per student. That assumes west to east and east to west, 'cause instead of getting somebody to west, we gotta get them to east. Some have a shorter trip, others are gonna have a longer trip, okay? Those are the kinds of things that I think are, are, not only, they're not huge, those are potential deal breakers, from my perspective. So, can I support a proposal? Sure. A proposal, yes, but these types of things have to get blown out, in my opinion. I guess for me to be able to support an actual plan to execute, these things have to get blown out in, in levels of detail, I, I don't know that, uh, that we've ever done here, you know, with something this big, to your earlier point, so.
Pat raises a point that I share, um, which is, there's a big difference between supporting a proposal and then supporting a final plan. Like, so, one of, I think the final question on the last slide was, are we, are we in a position to support a proposal? It sorta depends on what it is. Like, right now, if we're talking broad, um, top-level restructuring questions, um, from the secondary standpoint, I think that a junior high, senior high model would be an improvement over our two high school model. Like, there's pros and cons to both. I think overall, it would be an improvement. I think some consolidation at the elementary level would be an improvement. It's when we get to the, what I would say, second level of questions of how many elementary schools, and which elementary schools, and which campus should have the high school, and which the junior high, and what schedule, that's where, um, I'm not decided on, and where I think, and maybe you're saying, um, that's what the team of, of staff need to work on and not us. Um, so I, for me, it depends a little bit on what you mean by approving a proposal, and how detailed that would be.
So, um, much is, is already here, right? You know, we've shared little excerpts of it. The detail, we can, we have, we can likely identify schools. We can likely identify schools where charter schools would go. We had a wonderful, uh, conversation with a local childcare provider, and, and we would like to, you know, look at a, a school for, for that as well. Um, we have some preliminary, um, estimates on, uh, the, making sure that the high schools are ready, you know, for an eight, nine, or a ten, twelve. Wasn't ready for tonight, but it certainly will be in the next couple of weeks. So, yes, we can bring more detail to those, to those points.
I just wanna clarify, I'm, some, I've talked to a lot of folks, and they said, well, you're, you're against restructuring, or, you know, why aren't you for it? I, I'm not for or against anything. I am for doing smart things and I'm against doing stupid things. And I'm not implying that we're at any stage of that spectrum right now. I just think that we are, we need to go in eyes wide open on the risks, and it seems like that has been missing a little bit, and that's the detail that I'm, excuse me, that I'm really excited to, to see as time goes on. Um, the, the logistics of this, I think, are gonna be paramount. I mean, you know, we're, we're putting people closer to DC Everest and quicker travel times than we are to Wausau East, for some.
Mm-hmm.
Those types of things, and the negative impact that that could have on our revenue going forward, again, they need to be clearly understood before we go down a, a path that I would support.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if I may say something, at this point, you bring up very good points, and, and we need to have those points brought out in an open meeting like this, so that we can discuss those. So also, directing the administration to go find the answers. We have questions, we need the answers before we can give a nod to anything as we move forward. So, I believe you're at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Do we give a nod to get a plan together to bring back to us, so that we can take a look at that plan, accept it, refuse it, whatever the case might be? I mean, 'cause it may take a little bit longer than two weeks to figure this all out.
Oh, yes.
This is too big a decision.
This is a multi-month.
This is, exactly. So we're talking about some heavy, heavy lifting right now, but you're asking, do you move forward?
Right. And, and again, you haven't seen the final proposal. We'll be prepared to present that on January twenty-third, if you're ready to see it, and, and then at that point, we would, uh, you know, we would assume we're moving forward unless we find something that says we can't or shouldn't, right?
Well, I'd like to say I'm excited about this, and I think many are, and just like we heard from several of the teachers, and I hear from many people in the community, the strategic focus that this provides us, and for our students and for our staff, for the, for the negatives that have bubbled up, like logistics. Logistics is something that can be solved. Obviously, we have a bus driver situation. I was talking to parents in the DC Everest district. They're having the same things happen in, in that district in terms of bus drivers' availability, so, um, but consolidation and restructuring provides strategic focus that will provide such an awesome opportunity, and, and a laser-like focus for, for our staff and for our students like, like we've never seen. Uh, Pat, you mentioned, you know, folks that are closer to DC Everest. Well, if they're in the east side, uh, east side of our district right now, they may choose to go to DC Everest because of athletics or academic inequities that they're currently, you know, potentially experiencing. So they may already make, make that decision. Or they could say, wow, look at the amazing thing that the school district is doing, and the focus and the strategic, you know, focus that's going to be a, a part of this. I think there are way more positives in, in what we're talking about, and what's been talked about for how many months, and what's kinda bubbled to the, to the surface. So I'm excited about it, and I'm, I'm for it.
I'm, I'm curious to know if there's a reason to implement something quicker than not, and is that more about some level of instant savings, in a sense, on operational costs? 'Cause I feel like we're being rushed, and I don't have a lot of, I don't think the community's getting enough of their answers yet.
Yeah. And the hard part is that we can't answer those until we have a direction, a strategic direction. I like that phrase. You know, we, we have to say, if the board says, yes, we like this direction, we'll start planning, right? Is there, is there a, a need? Yeah, we're doing some, some building right now that, that needs some answers at West, at Mir, where, you know, our elementary schools are kinda waiting for this conversation, so there is some urgency. Secondly, when I talk to, to our staff, and they tell me about what they wish they could do for students, and they can't because they're spread so thin, I, that, that gives me, um, i- i- a great sense of urgency. I wanna make things better a- as soon as we can. I don't, I don't feel like we're rushing. I feel like we just need to say, yes, we, we wanna go this direction, let's start the planning, um, once you have enough information, and then we'll just start bringing you the information as we develop it.
I, I think also on that issue of rushing, um, some of that comes just from it not being brought to maybe your attention until more recently. Um, I haven't been here for fifty-two years, I'm not as old as Pat. Um... But we've been talking about this on the board for years. We've been talking about the inequities between east and west for years. We've been talking about the problem of, of so many elementary buildings for years. We talked about it back when we had eight or 900 more students in our district, let alone every year that it's gone down. So, um, from a broad sense, I don't think we're being rushed at all in terms of making a decision of, is that the direction we want to go in? It's when you get to the details of which school or, you know, which campus or which schedule, that's, that's the part that I think needs a lot of work yet.
And I agree with that, Lance. It's just, I don't know, you know, the, the conversations I end up with end up being about timeline always. And the only thing that has been in one of these presentations is that a possible implementation in 24, 25. And I don't see that as reasonable. First, a little bit more from just the logistics of, of curriculum and things like that that you've presented tonight. But physical building construction is not going to be done anywhere close to where you should combine anybody. You know, my, my view from construction wise is let the building stuff be done. And you, I totally agree that some of this has to be decided so that we can decide which buildings need to be finished with the construction or begin those projects that were in the referendum.
Yep.
And just one other point too. One of the things, Keith, if you can bring in that proposal, what I would like to see is what I would call kind of, and we could do it for student and staff, but I would call it a student journey in terms of here is an elementary student on, uh, that goes to Lincoln today. And here's what their educational path looks like. Here's what it would look like in, assuming that this would be, become live. Here's what their journey is going to look like. Same thing for, you know, a, a middle school student, same for a high school student. You know, this is a high school student on the east side, you know, post, um, post-project, they would have more access to these classes, right? On the west side, if I'm, from a west side student perspective, how are they going to see a benefit? And if you can do it for students and do it for staff in a couple of, I maybe just to elementary, middle school and high school, I think that will help, um, crystallize, you know, whatever benefits there are. I think people will help, it'll help make it a little bit more tangible, um, moving forward.
Maybe you've got a slide to show that.
Courtney, do you have something?
No, I'm good.
Pat, that's a very good point. And I think these are the types of things that we need to direct the administration on. And then you with your team can give us those models and those examples of what it's like to go from kindergarten all the way through and what it's going to be looking like for our students with transition. So I'm kind of looking back at our administrative team back there and I'm kind of saying, well, that's what we pay you for. And you got to get it done because we need to see this before we make a final decision on the, the plan that if we are willing to say, put a plan together so we can get a look at it, before we say, yes, we need to see all of those intangibles and tangibles.
Be able to do that.
I, I would echo what you're saying there, Jim, and I would agree that I think we do need to start some process rolling forward. I think it's important, I, I agree with what John had to say, and I definitely agree with what Pat and Lance had to say. It's nice having, I don't mean this in a, kind of a devil's advocate because it seems like maybe some board members are really pushing forward, some board members aren't. I'm not, I don't think you're against consolidation at all, Pat, but I, I like the perspective that you bring because it brings in, uh, it makes, it makes us do our due diligence the way we should to be fair to the community. I do think that moving forward timelines, what I worry about timelines, I mean, there's already spoken earlier about teacher intrepidation. They don't know what's going on. The sooner we can start getting some proposals, maybe we can start putting their minds at ease a little bit to see what this may possibly look like, even though we haven't decided on it yet. But we don't have a clue, right? We're talking about cutting schools here and, you know, making a junior, senior high and then that's maybe what we're going to go with. We don't know yet. But until we hear some proposals, how can we reassure these teachers and some of this, this unknown? I mean, the unknown's scary to a lot of people and especially it's going to affect a lot of these teachers. And I think that starting some proposal pathway will definitely help hopefully clear up some of that. But I do agree with you, Pat, as far as, you know, there are some logistical issues and things that we do need to make sure we vet completely before we, we go forward with it.
I, I agree with that too. Anxiety always has to do with something anticipated in the future. You know, until we get some, some real reassurance and some direction, and similar to what Pat was just saying, well, how do we take a student from kindergarten through graduation? And how is that going to look? And I think once we start doing that, we're going to start dealing with many of those emotional pieces that are part of that. And the teachers that are concerned are going to have, are going to have a, some sense about, well, I'm going to have less preps to do or I'm going to be able to focus more on some areas of interest. So that, to me, it seems that as we move ahead, that we, that we need to move ahead as we're talking about incrementally, get the proposals, get the pieces together and start asking the hard questions about some of those details.
Okay. Any, anything to follow up with? Because I will turn it back to you, Dr. Hiltz, for the question that you have.
Right. Um, is the board interested in seeing a proposal on January 23rd? It would include much of what you've already seen and then a few items that are new. But we would, we would name schools, um, you know, and, and rationales. Is that something you're interested in seeing in two weeks? Or is there something you'd rather see before that? You know, we had started talking about high school questions. That would certainly be a part of what we would bring on the 23rd. Is there anything else? I, I like your idea, Pat, about this student journey and what that would look like pre and post restructuring.
Is that a question you can answer without going forward? I mean, what Pat suggested as far as that, you know, student journey, or do you need a proposal to kind of be able to figure that out?
It depends on what level of detail you want, right? I couldn't tell you what the new courses would be, right, at the high schools. Couldn't tell you what the sports might look like, um, you know, so that, that's, that's our conundrum, right? We want, we want a clear vision, but the vision emerges through the, the plan development, which we, you know, we've only begun.
So the question is then to direct the administration to put a plan together, bring it back to us in two weeks, and then we take a look and maybe take a look at what we can add, subtract and deal with at that time so that they're, they can start working on something. Otherwise, we're, we're sitting here looking at one another, spinning our wheels versus having some traction to go forward and to get a plan. Because you can't just shoot out into the infinity here. We have to be looking at something a little bit as, going back to what you said, John, a little bit more laser on this so that we can take a look at some things. And then if we don't like something that we see, we can bring that up. This does not have to be, this does not have to be a motion. This can be a directive to bring something back to us.
Well, tonight, for sure. But I think administration is looking for a motion and vote before they actually go forward with engaging the, the teams of staff that are going to be working on whatever the plan is. So that, that's the, you mentioned the word conundrum and that's where I'm at, that it's like, I, it's hard, it would be hard for me to vote on something that we called a final plan when it hasn't been developed and we haven't heard all the things you're going to learn that are good or bad about it. You might get into the development and think, oh, it shouldn't have been that school. It should have been this school. So I, it would be hard for me to vote on something that would be sort of thought of as final. But on the other hand, I realize you need some sort of direction before you're going to put, you know, all these months of work into developing that plan.
That's my problem too, Lance. We, we're looking for answers and we don't want them to waste their time to give us the answers for us to change, change the direction too, too drastically.
I think you have to be careful with paralysis, you know, analysis by, or paralysis by analysis. I think what Dr. Hiltz is saying is that the rough outline of the proposal is, is pretty understood in that if there are all these what ifs, you know, that come along the way, yes, the, the administration and the district might get into this and go, you know what? Uh, instead of this particular school, we have found because of these particular variables or this situation, they will come back to the board and bring those variables to us. They're not just going to plow down a path and, and continue on it without bringing those updates or those concerns. They could bring something at some point that would stop it in its tracks and we all go, wow, that's, that's absolutely insurmountable and, and it makes no sense, you know? So I, I think we have to, if, I think in some of the earlier meetings, we talked about doing nothing is not an answer and we have to do something. And so I, I think what's laid out and what you have and the, the, that strategic focus and those benefits that are there far outweigh some of those negatives. And even some of those negatives are, are things that can be addressed, like transportation and like logistics and, and things of that nature. So I, I, I am for, um, seeing a proposal and continuing to work through that process.
And it would also seem like, in my opinion, from what you guys are saying, is that, and from what Keith has mentioned, that we can't answer some of these questions that you guys may have without having a proposal, at least in detail enough to know. And obviously, you know, the administration, if they come up with, you know, instead of closing such, such school, we should close this school. I mean, it, it comes forward to that. I mean, as we're so fond of saying, you know, it's up to the administrators to kind of figure that out and then bring it to us with all the pros and cons, pluses, minus, et cetera, and then figuring it out in the end. So I would echo what John said. I think we should push forward at this point and see. And I, it may, it may cause some undue work, but we won't get the answer unless the work is done.
Sorry, we're sharing a mic here because mine's dead.
We're close friends.
One thing that I would maybe add is, is you mentioned it might be hard to show, um, future classes or things that would happen in the curriculum because that's really unknown. However, what is known is you just heard an example here tonight, and I forget what, uh, course or class it was, but it was mentioned that five teachers existed, um, or, or whatever business over at Wausau West and one at east. So it might be easier to continue to point out the disparities and hence the reason why we're talking about this and what would, what the students and the staff would benefit, you know, from. So it might be easier to, to point out some of those disparities that will become, that are weaknesses right now that will become strengths and benefits for all of our students.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's what I would like to see more of too. What, in, in directing you guys, I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, moving forward to review a proposal. I liked very much hearing, um, some of the benefits that could be with this process because the fear of the unknown is always people expect change is going to bring negatives and they don't step back and say, actually, this change might bring a lot of unexpected positives. And those unexpected positives are a lot of what we, we would not know because we're not in the schools daily, but they can bring and say, you know, the workplace environment is so much more beneficial for a staff member that can say, I get to now focus on two class preps and maybe teach it to, you know, three sections of those, those classes. And that's better for all the students. That's better for the staff member for certain. And it allows, um, an overall better experience, uh, for the district. And so I think those are the things that I like to hear about too, that might be part of that student journey that instead of, had they gone to east, they, if they wanted to go into the business program, they would have one teacher, this many choices, the teacher is divided by, you know, whatever those details are, now has access to five or six staff members or whatever. And I think those are some of the, you know, scenarios that are just good to hear.
Yes. And, and you heard some of it tonight. And like you said, those are, um, you know, anecdotal things we can, we can certainly share. Hard to put a number on.
Right.
Right? You know, and, and when you talk about those potential benefits to the high school, you heard about it from our elementary folks here too. That same benefit comes with the elementary. So right now, if I'm a, a student, um, in a, in an elementary school with, you know, two teachers in my grade level, right, and a part-time resource and a, and a part-time GT and a part, you know, kind of scattered all over, you know, when, you know, when my teachers come together and they're trying to plan their win experiences, there's just two of them. What do they do? What do they do that's different? That helps, you know, really meets the individual needs of students with a team of four, right? And some more, uh, focused, resourced teacher time. Those are the kinds of experiences that, that we are envisioning and excited about. Hard to put a number on though, right? It's, it's more of an anecdotal, like you say, that student journey kind of a description.
But even just describing, you know, I think I remember a previous meeting, you know, someone shared, we have three GT individuals.
3.3, yes.
For 13 elementary schools. And just describing the scenario of having three G, 3.3 GT, you know, focused individuals across 13 schools versus across eight schools, there is far more that can be accomplished just because you're not running and splitting time. And now you get to, you know, remove some of that, you know, inefficiency. And so I think those are the scenarios that, the more that we can bring those to the community, the more people can get on board with the benefits of these changes. From every, and that's at the GT level, that's at the special ed level, that's at the ELL level, for all of the families who, who come from different, you know, groups with their, with their kiddos. So.
Yep.
Those are the kinds of things I like to hear so that I can share what the people are coming to me. Yep.
So there, there is no motion for this, but a direction to, to move, we want to see something.
Yeah.
Where we've, we've heard talk for quite a while now. We want to see something.
Well, if you've got something, I don't know why I wouldn't want to see it.
So we, let's, let's bring it here. So.
Why would we not want to look at it?
I think that's kind of where we're at, correct?
Good. Let's do that. Let's do that. Good. We'll schedule an auditorium so we can fit more people. It was great to have everybody here tonight to hear a lot of this. So thank you for coming. Good. Let's do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hiltz, in bringing this, uh, portion of the meeting together for us. We needed to see that. Agenda item number eight, new business education operations committee meeting, Rose Bowl parade and Northwoods Band Est. That was all brought to us at the last meeting. At the December Education Operations Committee meeting, Rob Perkins shared information on the Wausau East Band participating in the Rose Bowl parade. Um, is there anybody here that wants to add to what we saw?
Just a little bit. Um, so just show and tell. We got the, Mr. Perkins shared one of our, the, the drum skins and we have a proclamation from the, the mayor about, um, Northwoods Marching Band Pride Week. So, uh, we will display these somewhere in the district office. And would you mind talking about Rob Perkins' recognition, if you, if you're okay with it?
That'd be fine. I'm excited to hear about it.
Absolutely. So, um, Rob this morning was surprised, um, at about 9:30 by staff from the radio station, Hot 96.7, um, recognized as Teacher of the Month for his hard work and his dedication and making learning fun for students. Um, so not only does he get that recognition, but he is also in the running for Teacher of the Year through the radio station as well. And really what's neat about this award is this is nomination driven. So students and colleagues and parents would have put his name in the ring to receive this. So, um, speaking on behalf of him, I know that he is extremely grateful. And if you would like to see that moment, we did capture video and it is on the district Facebook page right now.
Thank you. And we did have a surprise assembly for the, the band. It's rare to have an assembly for the band, right? Usually the band, the band is the assembly. So, uh, so that was fun. Last, late last week, we, we did that. So that was, and some of our media folks were there. It was fun. Yeah.
It was exciting to see them march and to see that big band come around the corner and to see eight schools be able to put their arts together, the music department. So, thank you.
And if anybody didn't see it, the clips of it are available. The district social media posted it. There's clips. You can watch it right now.
And I think the whole thing is on YouTube.
I'm sure. Everything's on YouTube.
Yes. All right. Number two, open enrollment seat availability, estimated time. Give you a few minutes here. At the December Education Operations Committee meeting, Wendy Carleage presented the open enrollment space determination for 2023 and 2024. Any follow-up on that?
No, I think we just need action.
Okay. So we can move forward. I'm seeking a motion to approve the regular and special education non-resident spaces available under open enrollment for the 2023, 2024 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine. Moving on. WASB delegate assembly resolutions. I didn't know who to ask the question, whether it would be you, Ms. Vandenberg, or Mr. Webster, because you're both going to be down there. Do you have a summary for us about the resolutions for the convention?
I wonder if, I wonder if Lee, because Lee attended the.
Let me, let me pick up initially and then we can go from there. I think it's important to recognize that the way these resolutions were developed was through committee that Karen was on. And they've been, there were a number that was presented to them, I understand. And they narrowed them down specifically as recommendations that they wanted to go to the, to the assembly. And, and last week at the CISA nine meeting, all the delegates to CISA nine, we went through them individually, point by point, and affirmed that the work that they had done was, was admirable. And we supported every one of them with a couple of very, very minor pieces that, that could have been, that could be corrected. But basically we said, these are incredibly well done. These are things that we as a group could support. And so my, my recommendation would be that if you have some specific questions, we've, you've seen them and we'd love to, we'll see if we can respond to them. But they've gone, been, been through the mill a number of times. They will ultimately, if they're passed, which I suspect they probably will be, that they will be, give direction to the lobbyists for the School Board Association in terms of their actions with the legislature. So that's my comment about that. Do you have anything more, Karen?
Well, I would just add, I was a part of, I was appointed to the Policy and Resolutions Committee. So these all get brought from districts all over the state. And then we, on two different occasions, you know, for the full day, reviewed the resolutions, found out if some of them were redundant with policies that were already there, some were rejected, you know, some were just tweaked. And so, yeah, it's been a ton of work to get to where they are now. And now then they get, will be presented, geez, next week, before the full delegate. And up for discussion, which some of them, they basically, the things that we needed to ask ourselves is, are these worthy to come to the full delegation to be discussed? And so, you know, we've got the list narrowed and I think it's a really great one. It's good to hear that feedback too. And so that'll happen next Wednesday.
So I know you've been in the middle of those meetings and those are very intense. And that's why I look at you, but I also knew that Lee was up at CISA nine as well. Do we need a motion? Would you want a motion to be put forward and?
Yeah, we, we take action on it because although we have board reps, it's still, they're, the board reps are doing what we as a board decide. So if there were some reason that that we didn't agree with one of these as a board, we would pull it out and we'd only, you know.
So with that, with that, the, I'm looking back at Karen here. In fact, have you seen some things that you'd want to pull out of or anything like that? Or if you, you would want to put a motion forward and then we would discuss and vote?
Yeah, I guess I'm comfortable with them. They have a copy of all of them now here in your board book, right? And I have mine, obviously a hard copy. I'm comfortable with the changes that we have been brought with the, so for example, there were several options of each different proposal when it came to us. And then as a committee, we decided on different options of how those policies were written. I'm comfortable now as written, moving forward affirmatively on each of them. But, you know, I certainly can answer any questions if people have something specific about any one of the resolutions.
Well, then let me just put a motion forward. I'm seeking a motion to move forward with the resolutions as presented by Ms. Vandenberg and Mr. Webster, and seeking a motion.
Second.
Any questions? Any follow up questions?
Thank you for the work put into this.
Yeah, Karen, thank you.
And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm coming back to all of you for the board for any kind of professional growth and development report. If any of you have any report, this is the time. If not, I don't see anybody jumping forward, so I'm going to say, if not, Mr. Webster, do you have any follow up with legislative last on?
Absolutely. Actually, I do. I took the liberty to modify some things and I sent a copy of this to everyone today. So you have the legislative report in writing. I, one of the problems that I felt for years was that people would come in and we'd get a blast of things, but there was no way to, to put feet behind it and that people didn't walk out with anything hands on. So just a couple of shout outs. Governor Evers is going to be here Thursday night at Maine Elementary School. He's working on budget proposals. If you have anything that you would like to add, you could either show up at the meeting and testify, or you can submit a written statement and you may have more about that Keith, I don't know.
Not necessarily. We are, we're hosting it. We, they reached out to us, see if we would host it. We know where they stand.
Maybe you could send out information to all of us so that we know the timeline and.
If you go on the, the website that I have listed here, the Legislative Update website, it'll be the first item that comes up with places for you to link to register. And the second piece of information I think is really significant is that we knew we have a new state senator. Corey Tomczek was sworn in and he replaced Jerry Petruski, who's been there since 2013. So he's had quite a long, he had quite a long record of representing the district. And his primary interest was transportation. And I think it would be really nice if people contacted Corey and helped him think that maybe education was, was a really primary area of interest. So those are the two pieces that I had.
Okay. Dr. Hiltz, any follow up?
Nothing more to add.
Nothing more?
Will this, will the meeting with, just blanked out, was this meeting that, yes, is that going to be on our Facebook?
It's not really our event. I suppose we can advertise it there, but it's not really our event. It's the governor's event.
Okay.
Good question. At this point in time, I'd like to put the written board member lay us on district activity report and ask that to be put into official record.
There actually was none for this month.
There was none?
There was none.
Okay. Then you don't have to put that in the record. With that, I'm seeking, I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss evaluation, employment superintendent of schools, statute 19.85, one C. At this time, we need a roll call vote for that.
I'm going to make the motion.
We're ready.
I did. John Creacher?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Joanna Reyes?
Yes.
Corey Sillers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Karen Vandenberg?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.